Good afternoon. This public hearing will now reconvene for the committee to hear and accept testimony on Bill Number 315-36COR, an act to amend subsection 58104A of Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to incentivizing entities which promote clean transportation through vehicle electrification, electric charging infrastructure, and other mobility industries which reduce transportation emissions. Introduced by Senator James Moylan and co-sponsored by Senators Tony Adha, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, and Senator Sabina Perez. I would like to welcome and recognize Senator Jim Moylan this morning, who was the primary sponsor of the measure, and allow him to begin with his opening statement on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome to the panel. Thank you for being here today. The bill was also introduced with Senators Adha, Senator Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, and also Senator Perez. The act is to amend subsection of the chapter, Guam Code Annotated, in its relative to incentivizing entities which promote clean transportation through vehicle electrification, electric charging, infrastructure, and other mobility industries which will reduce the transportation emission. The statute allows for the incentive tool to entice entities to invest in industries which will provide the preservation of Guam's natural resource. It does not go further into attracting those who promote clean transportation of substantial mobility, which have multimillion-dollar investments in market-making technologies on a global basis. Now, by expanding the options for potential investors, Guam would have the opportunity to attract investors whose industry priorities are to promote products which would reduce harmful emission and to minimize the environmental impact. The electric vehicle, or EV, industry is growing exponentially on a global level, and the industry is also transforming from being just about luxury vehicles to more compact and affordable ones. With fuel costs escalating and the demand for more EVs, charging stations, advanced batteries, and other products and services tied to the electrification of transportation, including research and development, is also increasing worldwide. Furthermore, new innovation in autonomous driving collectively, as well as shared and smart mobility, including micromobility, are escalating. Now, while Guam may be at the infant stage with these industries at this juncture, it is a matter of time before the demand increases for such technology advances. So, this is the ample time to establish or enhance and promote incentive tools to attract such investors into Guam, while assuring our island slowly phases into decarbonization. So, this act would essentially insert additional language into the existing statute that already promotes an incentive tool for green technology, and would now enhance it to attract those industries promoting the reduction of transportation emissions. By providing more specifics would increase the interest of investors, whether they are existing businesses on island seeking to diversify their businesses, or whether they're expanding their portfolio, or outside investors who see the potential of growth in the clean transportation market in Guam. The act does not specify a tax abatement or exceptions and the length of the incentives, or any other specifics, and that will be left to the appropriate entity, which is GITA, Guam Economic Development Authority. But rather, it's to determine, to establish, and to attract new investments in industries which would help create new jobs, enhance tax base, and stimulate our economy. So, just the bill basically adds a couple of lines, one being the words "to reduce transportation emission," to make it clear, and also, for the purpose of this section, "Industries and activities involved reduce transportation emission shall include but shall not be limited to vehicle electrification, electric charging infrastructure, and other mobility industries, including autonomous driving collectively, and micromobility, and advanced air mobility." Basically adding in the new technologies wording that was not in our current laws. So, we're just enhancing it to attract the new industries to come to Guam. And this was all provided by us, to us, by the industries to help explain this to us and how we can strengthen the bill and attract more business to Guam. So, I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the panel for being here today.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Allow me at this time to also recognize Senator Joanne Brown. And we will now begin with testimony from the panel. And we'll just go ahead and we'll begin with Mr. Urbanaiz, if you could begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Senator Kenton Rigel. Good afternoon, Senator Moylan. Good afternoon, Senator Brown. Thank you for the opportunity for Guam Regional Transit Authority to present the testimony for the above-mentioned subject. I am Richard Urbanaiz, the interim executive manager for GRTA. Our mission is to provide reliable, accessible, and cost-effective public transportation services to the public and individuals with disabilities on the territory of Guam, to plan, establish, develop, coordinate, promote, own, and operate services and facilities that support public transportation. GRTA supports Bill Number 315-36. By partnering with the Federal Transit Authority, GRTA will be modernizing bus fleets, bus facilities, and purchase low- or no-emission vehicles that utilize advanced technologies to help improve air quality and combat climate change. Park-and-ride facility Bill Number 198-36, with the generosity of the Deli Do Municipal Planning Council and Mayor Savaris, has provided GRTA with a vicinity to build a GRTA bus terminal. The facility will enable employees, students, and residents to carpool or park their vehicles and proceed to travel to their destination by riding on GRTA buses. The building of this facility shall include electric charging infrastructure to support the electrification of GRTA buses. Our bus and bus facilities, GRTA has embarked on the planning of building a new facility. The 65,895-square-foot area will house the GRTA agency. In addition to a modernized ADA compliant facility with ample parking space for GRTA buses, it will also include an in-house maintenance building designated for GRTA buses, boasting a robust electric charging infrastructure to support the electrification of GRTA buses. Low- or no-emission grant program, capitalizing on the bipartisan infrastructure law, which amended the statutory provisions for the Grants for Bus and Bus Facilities Competitive Program, and the Low- or No-Emission Program, GRTA submitted an application for a competitive funding opportunity in May of 2022. This competitive program provides funding for the purchase of, or lease of, zero emission or low-emission transit buses, as well as acquisition, construction, leasing, and required supporting facilities. This application is currently under review by the FTA. As a conclusion reached on the basis of reasoning, GRTA supports Bill Number 315-36. Aligning with GRTA's mission, the agency will continue to provide sustainable development with our low emissions, no fuel, and electrification of buses by reducing carbon footprints, simultaneously assist our community with the optional utilization of affordable and safe public transportation while contributing to the island's economic vibrancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urbanaiz. Next, Mr. Walter Ujoa, Sun Energy Motors.
Honesty, Hafaday, Honorable Chairman, Honorable Committee Members, and Honorable Senators, who sponsored Bill Number 315-36. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today in full support of this bill. My name is Walter Ujoa, General Manager of Sun Energy Motors Incorporated. I am providing this testimony on behalf of our company. We have reviewed the bill and offer the following comments. We believe there is an abundance of reasons why Guam should consider incentivizing clean transport industries to the island, including a cleaner environment and island sustainability, the creation of new jobs, increasing our tax base, and sparing the economy. You may, however, have some questions on why this should happen at this time. For instance, with federal funds coming soon for electric vehicles, EV incentives, and to greatly assist in the establishment of an electric charging infrastructure, why provide additional local inducements? Well, states and territories that are already setting EV standards and targets, providing incentives, stimulating the market, and establishing industry dynamics will be in much better position to take advantage of the impending federal monies. Also, there is no federal mandate in the bilateral infrastructure law or elsewhere to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, nor are there directives to rapidly transition away from a reliance on fossil-fuel energy sources. Switching to EVs and helping establish related industries on island will go a long way toward reducing costs in transportation, providing for a cleaner and quieter environment, and helping stem the outflow of millions of dollars every year to purchase fuel. Another concern we may have is with respect to our Power Utility Agency and its capability in providing energy for electrifying local transportation. GPA has been and is still assessing the impact of EVs on Guam's power grid to ensure its electric generation and transmission systems are capable of supporting the introduction of large number of EVs, and is preparing to meet the electrical demand. By charging car batteries with off-peak electricity, the agency says EV owners can realize savings in the annual cost to operate vehicles. GPA has initiated its electric vehicle trial fleet expansion in 2017, and is promoting the wider use of electric vehicles in Guam to protect the island's environment and to lessen dependence on fossil fuels. Also, the agency plans to phase out their non-electric light-duty vehicles, which would result in substantial savings. Additionally, GPA plans to set up charging stations at their current customer service locations, and will eventually set up and support a growing infrastructure in other sites. In addition to their eternal pilot programs, they are working with the local automobile industry to assist in the growth of EVs, and is working with UOG to help educate and engage the island community on the benefits of vehicle electrification. According to its general manager, the utility is on track to achieve 50% renewables by 2030, five years ahead of the law that requires it to achieve that goal, and just three years from achieving its 25% of renewables. Another concern is this idea of range anxiety, a problem that would not concern us in our limited area of commuting, hence why the need for having public or private charging stations when we can just charge our EVs at home at the end of our short commuting day. Well, unfortunately, several island residents don't have that luxury. Many live in apartments or condominiums with limited or no access to an outlet or a charging station at their complex. Multifamily property owners would do well in providing these facilities for their tight communities. Charging stations also allow drivers to connect more intimately with the businesses where they are located, such as shopping centers, restaurants, and places where we work, and installing these stations increase property value. They can also be solar, which would greatly benefit EV and property owners. In essence, solar can provide substantially lower costs or even free transportation. Other benefits include much faster and safer charging, connection to a charging system which will monitor electricity consumption and optimize charging. Smart charging connectivity also allows drivers to see whether a station is free or in use and reserve it if necessary. All these benefits contribute considerably in incentivizing the adoption of electric vehicles. Lastly, but most certainly not the least concern is that once we have fully developed electrification for Guam, why then continue with attracting more industry? Transport electrification as a green industry involves more than just electric charging stations. EVs are the platform for autonomous vehicles, which is developing to be a major segment of the e-mobility and electrification industry, and will continue to grow for decades into the future. EVs and electrification also promote other facets of a broader trend in mobility, which includes in-vehicle connectivity, car sharing, and micromobility, such as e-scooters, e-bikes, and electric mopeds. Guam is just one of thousands of small island communities in the largest ocean in the world. These are the communities that have experienced and will continue to experience the greatest losses due to the effects of ocean warming and the rising levels of CO2 and other greenhouse gases. We should be the most committed to ensuring that we do all we can to, at best, neutralize these effects. The transportation sector holds a 20.1% share of global CO2 emissions, and in the U.S. alone, transportation accounts for 27% of greenhouse gas emissions. Attracting industry and mobilizing electrification on Guam will profoundly demonstrate our commitment to decarbonization and the push to carbon neutrality. Senators, thank you for the opportunity again to comment on this bill. We at Sun Energy Motors look forward to assisting with any questions you may have. Stu Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Ujoa. Next, GITA CEO Melanie Mendiola.
Hafaday, Chairman, and members of the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power, and Energy Utilities and the Arts, and thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 315-36 on behalf of the Guam Economic Development Authority. GITA is amenable to the language included in Bill 315, as it does not conflict with any other provision of the Qualifying Certificate law. As you know, QC's grant tax benefits in exchange for meeting certain requirements. The first criteria evaluated by GITA is whether or not that business is engaged or about to engage in an eligible business activity as defined in the QC law. Bill 315 aims to add additional language to the eligibility definition of the Qualifying Certificate program, specifically to include business activities that promote reduced transportation emissions. According to data compiled by the Bureau of Transportation Statistics, U.S. sales of light-duty all-electric vehicles and plug-in hybrid vehicles more than doubled between 2020 and 2021, from approximately 308,000 vehicles to approximately 632,000 vehicles, respectively. These shifting consumer trends, coupled with the continued fluctuation in oil prices, may present opportunities to entice investment in the business activities proposed to be included in the QC law. As such, GITA supports the inclusion of the additional language contained in Bill 315. Although I do want to note, there's nothing to stop a company that engages in such activity from applying for a qualifying certificate under general service. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me at 671-647-4332. I also have our assistant manager from the Business Development Department, who supports in all of our QC activities here to either one of us are able to answer your questions.
Thank you. Okay, that will conclude the testimony from the panel. At this time, I'll allow my colleagues the opportunity to ask any questions or make any comments. Senator Brown?
I certainly know we can see all the advantages that can come from, you know, things that are more environmentally compatible. Obviously, we're seeing changes in our climate. We're seeing it here, and we're seeing it in the world, throughout the world, of course. But how do we equate? Because at the same time, my power bill's going up in terms of what the exchange rate is of electric vehicles and plugging them in. For those of you that work with, what was the power demand of that, and what is that going to cost versus a gallon of gas that we've seen just, you know, substantially increase, obviously, over the last few months? Is it more cost-efficient? And then also, just in the purchase, because some of these cars also that, hybrid vehicles, you know, I know people that own hybrid vehicles who've come back within so many years of ownership of that vehicle, they have to buy a new battery, and that's when the big, you know, we're talking thousands of dollars that they're going to have to spend to purchase a new battery to replace the battery in their car. Obviously, they want to sell it, or they want to continue to use it for many more years. So, I mean, there's not necessarily always, even though we very much would like to see it, you know, the economies of scale don't always add up. Sometimes they look at it as a benefit for those that are more wealthier that can afford it versus the average person in terms of the cost to procure, and then, you know, just to operate it. So, do you have any information on that, just to give ourselves and, you know, members of our community that may be listening? What's the cost difference between having an electric vehicle versus your regular gas-powered vehicle that, you know, you're going and you've seen the increased rates of gas these days? What is more cost-efficient?
Senator, I wish I had numbers I could present to you today to show what we here on the island could save with respect to charging up our electric vehicles with energy that will come from the grid. I don't have those numbers. I can definitely work on providing something for you. All I can tell you at the moment, and again, it depends as well on the type of electric vehicle that's being charged, and the size of the vehicle, the size of the batteries and such. But for my understanding, there's a substantial savings in cost, and like I mentioned here, just from GPA's own experience in testing of their vehicles, you know, they say themselves that consumers will get a substantial increase in savings just in one year.
Well, I hope at some future point we can or can get that information, just as a comparison for ourselves, and like I said, the average person out there, if they're contemplating in the future to buy, you know, an energy-saving vehicle, electrical vehicle, just to get an idea, because sometimes the cost of vehicle, and then also, what is it costing, you know, per mile in terms of being able to charge that particular vehicle and the distance you're going to go, and what is the dollars and cents? I mean, for most people, I think that's what it comes down to ultimately, what's the dollars and cents? Because certainly, as the technology continues to improve, and that what, like in your business, what's coming out in the market, then people eventually are going to phase out. Maybe those that have their old muscle cars or something, their classic cars, are going to want to hold on to their gas-powered vehicle, but, you know, as things modernize, people are going to be drawn to that, but it's really, you know, what is it going to cost? What's the cost difference?
Right, and if I can just add to that, too, obviously, there is that cost of charging the vehicle, charging the batteries. Normally, what we look at in the lithium-ion batteries for electric vehicles is that you don't want to wait until your vehicle reaches 20% or 30% of energy in your batteries. So, this idea of moving to electric vehicles actually will have us move into a different mindset, where we don't wait for the energy or the source of energy in a vehicle to go fairly low or to near empty, and then go to the gas station and fill it up. With electric vehicles, the mindset should be changing to wherever our vehicle is parked, we plug it in and get it charged. And we can do that in different locations, like in shopping malls or restaurants, or when we visit the parks, or going to the gym, and spend at least an hour or two doing these activities. So, that's the mindset. And the other thing, too, is for most commuters, and studies have been done on this, I think one also by Department of Transportation, shows that as commuters, we don't really spend more than 30 miles riding around daily in our vehicles. And for fleet vehicles, that really isn't more than 25 miles every day. So, to charge up our vehicles, especially here on Guam, right, because we don't have that range requirement, simply because of the limits of our geography, you know, we can drive our vehicles for maybe three or four days until we have to charge it up. Just back to your question, also, there's costs with maintenance. There's very little maintenance, much less moving parts in electric vehicles than you have in your standard ICE vehicles. And so, you're going to be making a lot of savings just in the maintenance of your vehicle alone as well. And for the most part, it's just making sure you have air in your tires, and your brakes are going to be most possibly using hydraulics, and making sure that there's amount of the brake fluid in your vehicle. But also, you know, there's very limited amounts of, sorry, liquids in your electric vehicles, so it's probably just that substantially is here for your brakes. So, again, cost savings in the maintenance of your vehicle.
Well, I'm sure at some point, I'm not going to be labor today, but just the infrastructure that has to be put in place, obviously, to put in these charging stations, and who pays for the power that's coming out of the charging station? You know, are we going to put our money in, we park our car at a shopping mall? I don't know. But then again, it's also going to have to ensure that we have a reliable power system to provide that, because imagine if GPA goes down now, we're experiencing, it's like going back to the 80s and the early 90s, we're experiencing roving power outages, and you can imagine our whole operation coming to a standstill, because unless you're hooked up to solar or something, maybe those power stations can be hooked up to solar, and that's another way we can get about it.
Very good point, yes.
Those are things to look at. I wanted to ask for Mass Transit, do you currently have any of these electric vehicles? Have you brought them already in your fleet? Are you using them out in the community?
Not at the moment, Senator. We are working closely with FTA. We were just given the green light to go ahead and hire a electrification consultant as to getting started with our electrification program. And as you know, FTA was here three weeks ago, and we showed them the facilities that I mentioned in my testimony, and the locations, they said were perfect. Going back to Mr. Ujoa about going on the grid, they like the areas, because the areas where the electrification stations are going to be at, the charging stations, are not going to interfere with traffic as far as our park-and-ride facility and our bus facility, Senator.
So, you currently don't have electric vehicles, but you're acquiring them now, or?
We are going to hire a consultant first, because there are many, I just came from a conference, there are many different electric buses, and there are numerous companies that we can source out from. So, when you go to these conferences and you get approached by companies, like Mr. Ujoa, they give you a skeleton of the EV, a bus, and it's all what you want to put inside, the size of the battery, how many seats, et cetera.
So, you're just in the process, and then how long do you think before you get some assessment to determine if you're going to move forward, and what type of vehicles? You know, how many, your passenger bus, I mean, is that?
We're looking towards the second quarter of next year, Senator. We have the, we have FT, the chief engineer who came, he's very knowledgeable about EVs, so he is going to give us somebody, or suggest some consultants who are doing EVs for transit stations in the U.S. mainland. So, we have a budget to hire consultants, and as soon as we get them, I should have more information for you, Senator.
It'll be good, it'll be good to hear about it, and then also, like I said, if you can put the cost comparison, you know, because people understand that, we all understand the dollar very quickly, you know, just to show, is it more cost-efficient? And, I mean, like I said, I think if it's a trend of the future, which is looking like that's where it's going to be, I mean, eventually, we'll have no choice as consumers but to purchase electric vehicles.
Yes.
But I think while we're going through that transition period, knowing really what the dollars and cents are is also very beneficial, and then we have to weigh that, because like I said, we want to hopefully with the construction of the new northern plant, we'll have consistency with regards to our power delivery, and then those that, you know, also have or will invest in solar panels to power their homes, they'll be plugging into it, that'll be great, but it'd be good to get that information so our community can have a clear understanding of what the cost issue is, because we love the environment, but for a lot of people, it's the practical reality of what the dollars and cents, and either way, we're going to be dependent on, you know, fossil fuels unless there's an alternate type of power source that's going to go into our plant, which I understand will have the capability of processing different types of energy. But of course, that's the bigger world picture that we don't get to resolve here, but thank you so much for both of you for providing your comments and responding to my questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Before I go to the primary sponsor for his closing, I don't have any real questions for the panel, just a few comments in that, you know, I essentially support any initiatives that promote the electrification, generally all in favor of electrification and renewable energy. I think the two can go hand in hand perfectly. As we transition to 100% renewable energy, I think we're also going to see a transition to 100% electrification of vehicles. And the reason I think they work hand in hand well is a couple of things. As Senator Brown was mentioning, you know, it's almost like, what's the cost savings if you're going to plug in your vehicle into a power grid that's, the energy's being generated by oil, right? And what are the cost savings? I think once we transition to 100% renewable energy, we'll see a major reduction in the cost of production of power. Renewable energy is already cheaper than conventional means of power production. We can see it now more than ever. We can see it now more than ever, especially with the increase on the oil markets. But I think even when the oil markets were a lot lower, renewables had already reached a milestone where they were just simply cheaper. So I think as technology improves, we're going to see that cost come down even further. In fact, there's different studies or different reports, excuse me, that have been put out by various entities that are essentially saying the same thing, that the cost of production of power through renewable sources is going to come down. It's going to continue to come down, and in the future, it's just going to be cheaper than oil. Oil, on the other hand, is going to continue to increase in cost. So I think as we marry the two, the power grid being fully 100% renewable, together with electric vehicles, I think it's a perfect marriage, because there are already some systems in place that bring the two together in a way where electric vehicles are part of the solution of the power grid. And what I mean with that is electric vehicles are, in essence, little mini storage units. So I believe they do this in certain parts of Australia where they've already implemented this type of technology and this type of system, where the person at home plugs in his car, or the person is charging their car at work, excuse me, by the time they get home, there's plenty of power in the battery. If the battery's sitting at home, it can actually be plugged back into the grid and then tapped as well when the power's needed. So it becomes almost like an extra battery source, and it's a juggling act, right? It's juggling all these different batteries, and that juggling act is being performed actually by AI, which is another thing that I think we're going to see take over our lives, if it hasn't already. You know, just look at your smartphone. So the algorithm tells you what you're going to see on your smartphone, right? So I think as we see all of this technology come to fruition, it's good for us to try to stay ahead of it as much as possible and just embrace the future that's coming for all of us. It's coming. I'm just kidding. The robots are going to take over. That's what I'm trying to say. Let's be ready for that. So Senator Moylan, you may close.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the panel, and thank you, colleagues, as well. For closing, I'd just like to read a testimony that I received just recently here, and it comes from Triple J. They're currently in the business of selling electric vehicles, EVs, and we are working towards establishing a charging network. We represent several brands of vehicles that offer EVs, and we are an authorized reseller and market developer of blink charging system. We have already installed one fast charging station at our dealership in Timoni, and we are currently working with several potential locations, shopping centers, hotels, grocery stores, and medical clinics, on a number of charging station installations in the near future. Most auto manufacturers are transitioning to EVs from internal combustion engines vehicles in the next few years. So it is important that we, as a community, are prepared for the transition, and establishing charging networks now is imperative despite the fact that the return on investment will be several years down the road. EVs are still relatively expensive, and the cost of EV charging stations and associated installations is substantial. Any incentive to make both more affordable will be welcomed by the consumer and businesses alike. Sincerely, Jeff Jones. Thank you once again to the panel. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the talk.
All right. Thank you, Senator Moylan. If there are no further questions or comments, this concludes our discussions on Bill Number 315-36 COR. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearing within 10 business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Street, Suite 906 of the DNA Building in Higana. You may also send your statements to us at Clint Ridgell, that's C-L-Y-N-T-R-I-D-G-E-L-L at guamlegislature.org, or you can send them by fax, if you still use fax, 475-4768. Thank you all for your participation. This virtual public hearing is adjourned. It is 2:36 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll send my AI to fax it.